I will call to order the City of Portage Planning Commission meeting for Monday, November 3rd. If you would stand and say the pledge. Mr. Cherry, could you call roll?
Jim Weisman.
Here.
Melissa Weidenbach.
Here.
Brent Wright.
Here.
Carissa Childers is absent. Sam La Boy.
Here.
Deb Ekdahl is absent. Denise Little.
Here.
Victoria Vasquez.
Here.
Alonso Garcia.
Here.
If everybody's had an opportunity to look at the minutes, oh, corrections or addition? May I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
May I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Any reports from staff?
No reports.
Could you call our first order of new business?
First order of new business, P dash zero six dash two five, Simon CRE. CSH four LLC, care of Joe Mayer, Kim Kimberly Horn, one eleven West Jackson Boulevard, Suite thirteen twenty, Chicago, Illinois, seeking primary plat approval of landings of portage for three lots consisting of eighty-four point seven zero acres at the sixty-five-hundred block at the southeast corner of Airport and US Highway six.
Good evening.
You need to...
Yeah, I do have the presentation. That's what I was about to ask if staff would prefer that I pull that up first. Okay. Yeah, while I have this, I can introduce myself first. My name is Joe Mayer. As mentioned, I'm with Kimberly Horn. We are the civil engineering and planning consultant on behalf of the property owner and developer, Simon CRE. I've prepared a short presentation to introduce the project to you all. If you haven't seen it, we'll be happy to answer any questions following. So, a quick introduction to the project team. As mentioned, the developer and landowner. We do have an architect partner onboard, Tyler Carr with RKA Architects. And then I've got a team with me with Kimberly Horn that's been supporting this project. And I would just also like to say thank you to staff as we've worked over the past couple months to get to where we are today. To familiarize yourself with the property that we're speaking of, it's the southeast corner of Airport Road and Route six. You know, currently a farmed property. We're focusing on the northern forty acres as far as the development plan and site plan, but the plat is for the eighty-four acres as mentioned. Some more context for this commercial corridor of, you know, why this development is intended to be here and fits with the other surrounding community. So, we're on the kind of the eastern end of that commercial corridor. I do have a picture of the full plat, but this is, as mentioned, the northern half of the plat, that the southern half is really not the focus, but is the remaining parcel. The northern half is what's being split between two primary lots. Lot one for Target and lot two for the rest of the shopping center. We've shown some of the main road configurations on here. And as mentioned, working with staff on some of the common elements associated with the property. But the intent, as I flip to the site plan, without lots along US six and then the anchor tenants in the rear of that lot, lot one and lot two, with a parking field between. We've proposed two new access points off of US six that we're working with Indot on with some public improvements along US six to accommodate the traffic. That includes a fourth leg to the Pan Am intersection as well as a right-in, right-out at the mid-block. We're also doing improvements to Airport Road with the new access points as seen on the site plan. Working with staff, this project will be phased as more tenants and outlots come online. So, we acknowledge that not everything will be delivered day one. So, we prepared a quick colored map to try to depict the intended phasing. The red is some of the common elements that have to come in on day one, being the stormwater and main private roads. And then the blue is, you know, likely to occur at the same time, if not immediately after what we're calling Phase Zero, which is the actual target improvements. So, the target parking lot, the rear drive. The property owner has some strong interest for what we've highlighted in green, which, you know, technically would be a separate phase, but, you know, I think would quickly follow and then continue to build out the rest of the center with what's in white. I think it's important to note that from a planning and engineering perspective, we've designed it such that these phases can stand on their own and don't rely on the rest of it all being built out. With Target being the focal point of the center, we've certainly designed the green space and buffering around the building and the elevations, as you will see in context of the zoning code and also, you know, making sure that we've got a appealing and clean kind of front door to the center. That includes some berming and green space along Airport Road, you know, plenty of landscape islands and some foundation planters on the front of the building. And then what you see in the rear there is one of the stormwater basins with screening. This will be a two-entry Target. So, there's a kind of a split entry on the left and right side of the page. You know, a lot of the familiar Target features that you've come to expect. So, the top image is the north face, the front, and the bottom image is the rear face towards the pond and towards the screening. We've added some details to this, working with staff, understanding some of the screening requirements and some of the signage. This is the side view from Airport Road. So, you can see the truck dock on the right side where there will be a retaining wall. I think one thing that this doesn't is you don't have the screening here too, but, you know, this will even be supplemented further by that buffering. And then you've got the kind of the drive-up spaces on the west side of the lot near the front of the store. I'll pause for a second for any questions for myself.
I'm going to open it for the public hearing.
Thank you.
Is there anybody here to speak for the petitioner?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board.
We need you to state your name.
My name is Rod Portage, Indiana. I am very excited to speak here today. And I took some notes for the first part of the presentation from Mr. Mayer. And I want to share with you what stuck out to me. And, you know, in general, you know, a lot of the public isn't, you know, caught up in all the minutia. The public wants to know that things are being done the right way. The public wants to know that everything is fair. And the public wants excellence. The public wants excellence, you know? We don't want Portage to be a subpar or average city. We want the world to know and see what we all know about Portage. This is one of the best cities in the United States of America, from our beautiful waterfront, you know, all the way on down. And with that, what Portage is and what Portage is going to be is going to be based on the decisions that you all make, based on evaluating the information that is brought here, you know, before you. So, this is a very important, this is the most important part and piece. What Portage is going to be tomorrow is going to be based on what you do today, you know, right now. So, you know, we think about and love what Portage is today, but when we think about the future, you know, what's exciting is that, and when I say we want excellence, well, it appears that this is an organization of excellence. I had a chance to look them up online, and I always like to share reviews with you all in terms of, you know, what do the people say? You know, we know the presentation is going to present, you know, excellence always, but what do the people say? And I've, I got to tell you, this is maybe one of the first times where every rating is a five-star, every single one. There's not one two-star, not one three-star. You know, that says excellence. That says a lot because, you know, everyone's got at least one two-star in there. You know what I mean? I mean, just in general, most people are not one hundred percent, but the organization you're hearing from today, from the standpoint of feedback that the public inputs to Google, is a hundred percent. Let's talk about the presentation that you all just saw. If you notice on the very first page of the presentation, in the bottom left-hand corner, they inserted the city logo, the City of Portage logo. On the bottom right-hand side, it said City of Portage, Indiana. So, they didn't just, you know, take a generic screenshot. They customized it because that's the level of, you know, just seriousness that this organization demonstrates, as well as, you know, I say respect to the board. You know, why wouldn't anyone come here? You know, we've got beautiful screens, we've got a top-tier audio and visual technician who can assist. Why would anyone come here wanting something and not utilize these technologies? I know why people would because they're very serious about what they do. And to customize with the city logo, that's what that said to me. Next, Mr. Mayer said, "Thank you." That's very kind. You know, I had a chance when this gentleman walked in the room, spoke to him, and I'm happy to report, he was extremely cordial, friendly, nice. He doesn't know me. I've never met him, but I can just share my perspective and my feedback on the interaction that I had with Mr. Mayer. Followed up, the second thing he told you, he said, "Thank you," to some of the people maybe he had worked with and engaged with. That's just a, that's just a really good person right there. Next, the colored phasing on the map. I mean, that made for great explanation. Like I said, I'm no expert in any of, you know, the building stuff, engineering. That's not my expertise. But that colored phasing, it made it very easy to understand. I was able to understand. And that speaks to a skill set in presenting when you're able to take something that's complex and, you know, make it so that a novice can understand it. Again, that goes into, you know, this organization appears to really know what they're doing. Next, he said, "The phases stand on their own and don't rely on the rest of the build-out." That seems very professional to me. So, as this build-out, you know, to bring a Target to Portage occurs, it's going to be done in a neat, beautiful way that's not going to be excessively disruptive to the eye. The last thing that stuck out to me in the presentation, we had views from all sides, the front, the rear, with the airport roadside. It's just a very, it's the type of presentation, when I see this presentation, I say, "Hey, you know, this is the type of organization, you know, that we want." The CEO of the organization, Joshua Simon, actually called him a little while ago here. He actually has his cellphone number right there on the webpage. And I mean, that speaks to a level of commitment. You know, most CEOs, and I probably wouldn't put my information on the webpage, you know, you know, a little more private, but that speaks to his belief, his conviction, and his commitment to excellence. When you put your, as a CEO, you put your cellphone number right there on the page so anybody can call you. And anytime, and I did actually call him, I left him a message. I let him know that this meeting was about to happen in Portage, Indiana, which I'm assuming, you know, he may have known. But these are my takeaways, and it is for all of those reasons. And what an exciting tomorrow, what an exciting today, but what an exciting tomorrow Portage is going to be with this Target enhancement. I recommend for P dash zero six dash two five to vote affirmative. Thank you.
Is there anybody here to speak for the petitioner?
My name is Dawn Edmiston. I live on four fifty on the opposite. So, my property is going to be coming to the back end of where Target Coles is. The main question that I have is, I know you said you're going to extend that road. What is it, Pan Am? When it comes to those lots that are behind us, because right now I'm in a landlock, and I had questioned the city, you know, what do I do with my property behind? Because being that I'm getting older, want to open up them lots so I could sell. Or is the city going to have them to have that annexed or, you know, available, how we're going to be able to split that up? Is that going to be available to us? Or do we have to come to the city on down the road to get that presented, how we're going to have those roads open up for us? Because I noticed today, when I went back to the back of five hundred, seven hundred, that's going to be homes over there. I didn't even know that. I got to start driving around more. But yeah, I just didn't know if that is included on your plat or what.
We'll have city address that for you.
Okay, okay. Thank you. I just didn't know if that was part of his thing. But thank you for everything you're doing.
Thank you.
I love Target. I'm done.
Is there anybody here to speak for the petitioner? Is there anybody here to speak against the petitioner? Is there anybody here to speak against the petitioner?
Albert Hewitt, seven fifty North, five hundred West. I'm not here to speak for or against. It's more so a question in regards to the remaining plat, the remaining forty-four acres. What is the future plan for that? Considering that is directly across the street from my house, so I'm concerned. There were two gentlemen that came to my house today in regards to land surveys, surveys and locate because the property across the road from me is still currently using my address. I've actually received mail in regards to the property that I had to send back to the post office. The other question is in regards to, can you go to your front view of the street for how you have vehicles turning in? That one will work. Will that be widened out? I know this is probably a state highway question because it is Route six. You guys may not be able to do anything about that one. But I feel like that should be widened to have a turn lane to actually have you allow vehicles that are traveling eastbound to turn in without obstructing too much traffic to go eastbound. And then your westbound traffic, will there be a lane for them to turn in from the east going west? Or will you have to go to the light to turn in and then make another left-hand turn? Like again, it's not a question that you may be able to answer, maybe something for state highway. But yeah, more so concerned about the remaining forty acres that's to the south.
And do you live south of the new?
Yes, ma'am.
Community?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, that's what I thought. And we'll have your questions answered for you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody here to speak against the petitioner? Is there anybody here to speak against petitioner? If not, I close the public hearing. And I'm going to ask if you could address the questions that they had.
Yeah, I'll start with the last question and maybe work earlier. Yes, on the Highway six improvements, there will be a right-turn D cell lane for eastbound traffic that needs to enter the center. We're actually proposing two, one being a right D cell lane that turns onto Airport Road, and then a second D cell lane into the middle point of the center. So, I don't know if I can use my cursor, it won't show up, but the mid-block right-in, right-out that we mentioned. Because we're adding two D cell lanes, two separate ones, there's not a need for the third. By that time, the traffic study shows that if you wanted to make a right, you were going to make a right. And then for the opposite direction, traffic coming from the east going west, we have proposed a left turn in at Pan Am so that you don't have to go all the way to Airport Road to come in. We have a traffic study that supports that. Ultimately, that will be the decision of Indot, but we've given them all the information that they need to make a final decision. And we do feel what we have in front of you today is what will be constructed.
Okay, now, he, his home is on Airport, so he's asking about turning in from Airport.
Yeah, so coming down Airport Road, we do have widening at the Airport and US six intersection, but there is not any other turning improvements further south. There would be a left turn in at the kind of front of the store, but nothing further south.
Did you do a traffic study on that also?
Yes, we did.
Okay. Tom, do you want to make any comments?
He pretty much summed everything up.
I can't speak to the application for the southern forty acres. Honestly, I'm not representing that project. I do understand that Simon is in discussions about it, but...
He's talking about the east side of your project. The south side.
Yeah, the lot three of the subdivision, which is the southern, you know, approximate forty acres. I think it's slightly more than that, but yeah, so I'm not here to talk about the development plan for that. Currently, there's nothing a part of our application here tonight, and I unfortunately can't speak to the intent.
Okay. Tom, did you want to address about roads going through to residential properties? If the city has anything to say about that, or is there any planned?
Well, I'm not really sure where you're talking about. Where are you located at?
I'm approximately the fifth, I'm pretty much right behind Target, so I'm the one that has the pond. That's what we were talking before, like what other, they're going to do the perimeter is random at. So, I'm like pretty much right behind them, so to go straight back. That's my most of the property. Going with the colored one, you'd like to see pretty much like right behind that whole strip right there. If you go up where Target is to the right, that's my property line back there where that road is going to go. So, I don't know how you're going to have the access to those properties. Because a lot of our lots are acreage, you know, wide, but we go back to where that church is, where Pan Am is, that's how far back our properties go, our lots. That's all wondering, I see you have the road there, Pan Am, so I was just wondering how you're going to open it up. Because a lot of our, some of us would sell, some don't, you know? I talked to our other neighbors, you know, there's two that won't, but then, you know...
I mean, I think that's...
My farmer, he doesn't know what to do either, because that's going to cut him off too.
Right, I think that's, we, did you discuss that with, did you come in and discuss that with Dina? No? Okay, I thought you came into the office. I'm sorry. We could take a look at that, but future road and thoroughfare plans, we're actually going through our master plan starting first of the year, so a lot of that's going to be looked at.
Yeah, they're not mine. Anything, if you'd like to share, anyway, I was just wondering if you guys had an idea yet? Okay, wonderful, thank you for answering that.
Okay, I'll now open two questions from the board. Question that we started out with having Pan Am and veterans. Tom, I think this is a question for you. Originally, we had Pan Am and veterans running east and west from the comp plan, and now we have a private road. Why?
Well, veterans heading east can really go nowhere. So, we, they wanted to do a private road, and everybody, staff, administration was okay with that.
And does that change their setbacks on a private road or setbacks less than on a public road?
Well, yes, it does affect that. Not on the perimeter of the property, but internally.
Correct. Internally, yes.
Yep.
Any other questions?
I don't know if I understand your question about the private road. Is Pan Am going to be a... Is Pan Am going to be a private road or it's not going to be a regular road like we did when Augusta was pulled through? So there, it's going to be serviced with the light and it's going to be part of Indot's setups for intersection? Pan Am is north and south. That's it coming out of the theaters.
The other road on South Veterans Boulevard.
That's off of Airport Road. Pan Am comes off of 6. Now, is Pan Am going to be a normal street or is that a private road? Doesn't a comprehensive plan include Pan Am?
States that they should be part, veterans should run through?
Well...
I know it's not going anyplace right now.
On the comp plan, it shows...
Fifty years down the road, it could.
And it shows proposed, so it's not, it wasn't in the comp plan as far as, it was proposed on a dotted line, so.
Our first plan showed veterans and, and the other, and then it like switches.
Yeah, that may have been the start of it, but it's changed. It's private.
Other questions? If not, may I?
Question. There's a long list of contingencies we have presented.
Twenty.
I got seventeen.
I think the new one's twenty.
Are any of those been solved or removed?
To answer your question a hundred percent, we have not done a full review in regards to the last summit that we have had. Because of time.
So is this a primary plat or is this one the site plan? Cause on the site plan, I got twenty-seven. I only have seventeen on the other one.
It's primary because it requires a public hearing, so I did the primary first.
And if I may, I'm sorry, the applicant is aware of the conditions of approval and, is willing to work with staff to solve them.
And to be clear, we cannot move forward without going through all of these and making sure they're all checked off, so.
I'll make a motion, but I have seventeen. Is there an updated list?
I have twenty.
You, you don't have to read through them all, you can just say contingent upon the, the contingencies on staff report for P-06-25.
Number, because they're different. One through seventeen and one through twenty.
Are you looking at P-06-25?
I have P-06-25. That's the one she said they were doing.
Yep.
That is the latest.
Okay, cause I printed this off like three o'clock. It's twenty.
And that's on the next case.
Okay.
That's the next case. No, no. So this is the staff report, the report for P-06-25.
I'll make a motion to approve the primary plat of P-06-25 contingent upon the seventeen items given to us under the, in the, what's this called? Staff report.
Second.
Mr. Cherry, could you call roll?
Jim Weisman?
Yes.
Melissa Weidenbach?
Yes.
Brent Wright?
Yes.
Sam La Boy?
Yes.
Denise Little?
Yes.
Victoria Vasquez?
Yes.
Lonzo Garcia?
Yes.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Can you call our next order of business?
M-09-25, Altoff Homes LLC, care of Todd Leith, Leith Law LLC, 2700 Valparaiso Suite, 2412 Valparaiso, Indiana. Requesting annexation recommendation to the city council, approximately forty-six acres plus or minus, located at the southwest corner of 625 West and 700 North.
Good evening.
Good evening, excuse me, good evening. My name is Todd Leith. I'm here on behalf of the petitioner in this matter, Altoff Homes. Kevin joins me as well from Altoff and together we're going to try and present to your, our, our request and answer any questions that you have. So this is a annexation petition that has been filed for a property that is forty-six acres in size, a little bit more than that. And it's located on the south side of County Road 700 North. And it's immediately adjacent to Bauer Farms, which was recently approved for a subdivision and is currently under development. As I indicated, forty-six, nearly forty-seven acres. This is not a subdivision plat. We're going to have and show you a concept plan. But we are here to seek a recommendation. If the city council so chooses to annex this, a recommendation from you to the city council as to what the zoning should be. And of course, we are proposing, Altoff Homes is proposing the subdivision, and we have a concept plan. Your ordinance merely says that the plan commission shall recommend to the common council, that's the city council, the appropriate zoning district for areas to be annexed by the city. So that's what brings us here tonight. We have an annexation plat, which the city council is interested in because they have to follow state law. State law requires that any property to be annexed has to be contiguous to a certain percentage, and that percentage is twelve and a half percent or one-eighth. This property, this map confirms that we have fifty percent contiguity. The north property line and the west property line, both are contiguous to the existing boundaries. This is our proposed concept plan for forty-four homes, twenty-two lots of paired cottage homes. And we're asking that that section in the red or salmon color be zoned for the M1 district. And then a hundred and four lots for single family, that's the beige area on the south and west side. Most importantly, this is twenty-five percent open space. So we have a large pond area in the middle and in the northwest as well. So that's significantly more than your ordinance would require and I think is a great asset. We're also proposing a one and a half, nearly one and a half acres of a park area and playground in the center of the community as well. This is a mixed residential, as I indicated, proposed subdivision. And we're going to have commitments with the annexation. There'll be a annexation agreement, if you will, to provide for the concept plan to be followed. They'll have lot counts and home styles are within that. We have a landscaping plan that we will be proposing to the city council and development standards as well. So it's a really well-thought-out plan that we're going to be proposing to city council for all of these. The only thing that we're asking the city to do is zone the property under the annexation agreement. So if you take the concept plan, this is the zoning exhibit that we would ask the city council to adopt so that we can follow that concept plan. This shows the M1 zoning and the R4 zoning. The M1 is the blue in the upper right and the balance of it is the purple area. We have legal descriptions that are part of our annexation petition as well. It's a fairly simple request tonight, just the recommendation to, if you will allow us to follow that concept plan, but we need the zoning recommendation tonight and ultimately the city council to annex the property and place those zoning districts according to this exhibit. Again, Kevin and I are happy to answer any questions that you might have. Thank you.
I'm now open to questions from the board.
With the annexation and your concept plan, with the remaining in the salmon colors, what are those lot sizes?
So the, the single-family lots are fifty by one-thirty and the duplex lots or the cottage homes are ninety by one-thirty.
Thank you.
So you'll be asking for variances on those, on the single-family lots?
The, I believe that fits with the R4 zoning district.
Okay. Any other questions?
It does.
If no questions, may I have a motion?
I make a motion to give a favorable recommendation to city council for...
M-09-25. M-09-25.
M-09-25.
Do we have a second?
One second. Hold on a second.
I don't want to be over technical, but we're not here to recommend or not recommend annexation. We're here tonight to recommend the zoning that the city council may apply to this if in fact they annex. So we need some proposed zoning districts to go along with what's been requested, so that's what the council would have from the plan commission.
Would you remove your second? Who's second? And Brett, you're going to remove yours and make a new one?
Oh, we send in the recommendation of the zoning?
So if, if the, if the motion were attempting to, to look for a favorable or for how to place it, I think the easiest way to look at it would be the, what's the name of that road? I can't read it.
I've got the zoning map pulled up on the screen there.
Okay. So the blue would be M1 is what the petitioner is requesting the recommendations be. The petitioner is requesting the purple, for lack of a better vocabulary and colors, R4.
I'd like to make a motion for the proposed plan with the R4 and M1 zoning as being proposed in M-09-25. For a favorable recommendation to the council.
Second.
Mr. Cherry, could you call roll?
Jim Weisman?
Yes.
Melissa Weidenbach?
No.
Brent Wright?
Yes.
Sam La Boy?
Yes.
Denise Little?
Yes.
Victoria Vasquez?
Yes.
Lonzo Garcia?
Yes.
Very good. Thank you so much for your time and attention.
So I believe we could group these last two together, S-07-25, SP-08-25, Simon CRE, CSH4 LLC, seeking secondary plat approval of landings and site plan approval.
Good evening. Should I state my name again for?
Pardon?
Should I state my name again?
Yes.
Joe Mayer with Kim Lee Horn here on behalf of the, the landowner and applicant, Simon CRE. I'd be happy to make another presentation if the board would benefit from it. But yes, as staff mentioned, also seeking secondary plat and site plan approval tonight.
Could possibly give us any information on the, the building itself? Cause everything you gave before was on the development timeframe, we don't, the square footage, but...
Yeah, I can, I can go back through this with a little bit more attention to, to the site plan itself and to the building as mentioned. So the, the site plan before you here focused on Lot 1 and Lot 2 in support of the, the Target anchored shopping center. It's approximately a hundred and forty thousand square feet. If I were to move that, I'm sorry, I would give you the exact number. But we're adequately parked per the zoning code as well as Target's restrictions. There will be an operating and real estate agreement that's associated with the plat. That's one of our conditions of approval, that staff is reviewing that operating agreement. So how does this center run effectively with all of the different tenants and make sure that it's a cohesive development? And so we have that in place such that the different anchor tenants and that there's shared parking and shared access and shared utilities. So this site plan has been set up so that all of these uses, like I said... Um, so this site plan has been set up so that, um, all of these uses, um, like I said, are cohesive. Um, the, we, we've focused on both, uh, pedestrian and, you know, parking access, so we are proposing a bike trail, um, kind of a shared use path along the west side, uh, multiple pedestrian paths to bring, um, activity from US six or Airport Road to the front of the center. You know, with, like I said, sufficient parking, the, the buildings itself, the, the elevations that we have in front of you here today, um, we have reviewed with staff, um, we, we've been to BZA prior to this meeting and achieved the variances that we've needed. Um, so that is one condition that is behind us, we felt like that was pivotal to, to have. Um, but, you know, like, I, I, not an architect specifically, so I can give you my layman's terms, but it is the, the normal Target red, the normal Target signage that you would expect, uh, the storefront glazing, um, that you see across the, the front elevation. Um, they've also done a good job of articulating both the colors and materials on the, on the other, um, elevations as well. Um, the, the rear facing, um, obviously more of your utility and access and loading, um, and that will be screened by the landscaping. Uh, we have a, we have a line of shrubs as well as a stormwater detention on the rear of the property. Um, this, this will be set up like a typical, uh, strip, uh, shopping center where the, the anchor tenants are, are in line, um, with other smaller tenants, so smaller box uses. At this time, we don't have who those tenants will be, but there is a lot of interest in the center.
Okay, thank you, now I'll open two questions from the board.
There's a lot of parking being presented here, a lot of spaces. Have you considered putting in EV charging stations to, just kind of like entice those kind of things to your parking areas?
I'm going to look at my, one of my counterparts, I think we have EV ready. Um, I don't know that we're showing specifically pedestals right now, and if that's something that's in the zoning code, I think certainly could meet it. Um, otherwise, uh, right now it would be EV ready but not EV installed. Uh, I'm sorry, the difference is whether, um, the, the pedestals are actually installed or if there's electric or conduit that's able to support it.
You have a blank chart out there, a blank field, you could add that stuff.
Uh, yeah, I, I, I agree, and I, and if it's okay, if I could ask staff, I don't, I don't know that it's a zoning code requirement to have EV stalls. Uh, but it's certainly something that I can bring back to the developer, I think it's a, a fair ask, without making any firm commitments.
Any other questions?
Uh, there was a prior review number five, um, I don't think made into the staff report. Contingency number twenty has been satisfied, I'm not sure if that makes any difference to the list of contingencies, but FYI.
Any questions? If not, may I have a motion?
Uh, for motions, we should probably separate the motions per, yeah, correct. And the contingencies, there's a couple different, there's, um.
There's a staff report for each.
For each, yeah.
Yes, and we're on S dash zero-seven dash two-five.
I'd like to make a motion for S dash zero-seven dash two-five as proposed with the contingency stated on the staff report.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Mr. Cherry, could you call roll?
Jim Weisman?
Yes.
Melissa Weidenbach?
Yes.
Brent Wright?
Yes.
Sam La Boy?
Yes.
Denise Little?
Yes.
Victoria Vasquez?
Yes.
Alonzo Garcia?
Yes.
May I have a motion for SP zero-eight-two-five?
I'd like to make a motion to approve SB dash zero-eight dash two-five as proposed with the contingencies attached to the staff report.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, Mr. Cherry, could you call roll?
Jim Weisman?
Yes.
Melissa Weidenbach?
Yes.
Brent Wright?
Yes.
Sam La Boy?
Yes.
Denise Little? Victoria Vasquez?
Yes.
Alonzo Garcia?
Yes.
And now it's up to us to check off all the contingencies, so it'll be a busy ordeal, so.
Congratulations.
Yeah, thank you all, thank you all for your time.
Adjourned.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.